Call the meeting to order, the planning board for April twenty second, twenty twenty four, roll call attendance.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Kevin Hine present.
Joined by our planner Cassandra Day and our town council Carolyn Murray. I was gonna let Amy cheer this chair this meeting because I am going to be presenting. Um, so. We are going to conduct the hearings on articles Z B C eight and nine, continued hearing. I'll, I'll just deal with nine as I was going to deal with first because it's easy so to deal with and it's a very quick decision and it doesn't matter which way we decide really. Um, because the notice for these public hearings had to go out on a deadline before. We could fully discuss everything within the bylaw committee and the other committees. Um, the original proposal to repeal large home review was the one that was advertised. And to now keep it and amend it as is the most recent proposal is outside the scope. The Carolyn's opinion, and so we can't go forward with that as part of this hearing process. Our choice is very simple. We can either. Well, we can either go forward with repealing it, but I don't think anybody is in favor of that anymore. We can. Um. We have time to reschedule a public hearing and all the amendment that is required. Is terminology amendments, housekeeping amendments to conform to adopting floor area ratio, assuming we're recommending. Article eight. The other, the third alternative is just to leave it as it is and deal with it from now till the fall and amended in the fall. The. F A R article if it goes through, it passes town meeting, it's not going to be approved by the attorney general before we get to full town meeting in all likelihood, so I don't think there's any problem. And you know, my personal recommendation now is we just leave it as is. Drop. The article altogether, that will bring us down to eight articles, that will make probably lots of.
That's probably enough, Tom.
That's probably make a lot of powers that be happy that we drop an article, so that's my recommendation at the moment, whether we just not bother with it and we'll just muddle through with its existing text until the fall.
If that's motion, I'll second that.
Okay. Is that appropriate for a motion Carolyn, that we not entertain it at all?
That you're not going to go forward with um with Z B C nine, that's fine.
Okay, yes, so the motion is to not go forward with Z B C nine at this time. Clark second that.
Sorry, Tom, you might want to also just add so that the board can further study it. So that if you do decide to bring this back in the.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Suggesting that, oh, it's a repetitive petition.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's to further study it and, and I think I've made it clear that. The consensus amongst the bylaw committee and the meeting with the zoning by. Board of Appeals a week or so ago, two weeks ago was to keep it. Um, and have it work in conjunction with whatever we do with the fail. Alright, so that's the motion, uh, all in favor of that.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glass.
Amy's here.
Amy's here, I'm here.
Kevin Hine, I.
Thanks, alright, so that deals with nine, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to Amy to run for. Uh, respect to the continued hearing on Z B C eight.
That one is floor area ratio, Tom?
Correct. Um, alright, thank you, um, so I want to make a few introductory comments and that is. Uh. This is an important item in the zoning bylaw. Redraft. And I want the conversation to be organized and civil. I want people not to speak over each other. You speak one at a time. Do not look at each other, look at me. And I will tell you who speaks next. So that we can do this in a, in a, an efficient way, so that everybody gets what they want to say, said. And uh, we can come to some understanding of this topic. And so please recognize at this point I am the chair and if you're out of order, I will call you out of order. So I'm going to now turn over the. Discussion to Mr. Callahan to begin. Uh, this particular part of the review of the zoning bylaw change.
Appreciate that, thank you, Amy, let me just get it back up, I had it there a minute ago. Uh. Sorry. My apologies, I had it a minute ago and I seem to have closed it, I didn't find it. Too many folders for this stuff, alright, it's.
We have time, so don't worry.
I'm sorry, okay. So. Alright. Can everybody see this? Everybody see C B C eight?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay.
May have to strain a little bit, but what, we can see it.
Alright, so. It has gone through review. Um, with. Carolyn and with Judge Cutler. And so you see language, it's cleaner, neater. Um, originally when she wrote it, she had the change and we were doing to the total lot coverage. And again, through the consensus of the bylaw committee and the Z B A, we want to keep that in, so. Still have a total lot coverage of all impervious material of thirty percent of the lot. But the primary building coverage is switching to a floor area ratio measure, and these are the proposed numbers. And then there is simple.
Excuse me, Tom.
Excuse me?
Excuse me, Tom.
Uh, uh, Clark, uh, Tom is actually presenting and let him finish.
Uh, I just had a question about the twenty percent coverage.
You can wait until he finishes.
Well, we won't have the same screen, but that's fine.
Clark, the twenty percent is being replaced by floor area ratio. I don't under, I'm not going to get into personal criticisms. Alright, so all the stuff that it originally proposed about new definitions and new terms is gone. Um, the provision about allowing for a. Special permit process if you exceed the maximum F A R. Uh, the judge has reworded it to ten percent, it shouldn't be hundred and ten percent, that can be misinterpreted. Um, that's still here. And the. Bylaw committee supports having it there, the by, the vote zoning board of appeals supports having it there, the select board, as you all know, does not support being there, but that's where we are with that. We think that that provides. A little flexibility to the process. Um, the explanation, the article hasn't changed, so it's, it's now. What we're doing here is that if we are replacing. The twenty percent. Primary building coverage of a lot. Which, as I've said before, our data does not show that that is a regular occurrence, except in the very smallest of lots in each of the three districts, does it even approach? Twenty percent. The averages are much, much smaller, so what we're doing is to remove the threat. Of a twenty percent two dimensional. Measurement. And replacing it with a three dimensional. Proportional zoning concept of floor area ratio. In line with the average numbers for square footage of houses. In our respective districts as measured over our current. Minimum lot areas which were set back in nineteen eighty six. Nineteen eighty six being. The time that we last say that the dimensional table was looked at in any kind of comprehensive way, and one of the changes in eighty six was to bring us to our current lot sizes. It's the only way to measure it. Um. You can't be measuring it against what. The, this is the averages and, and it leads to a fairly high floor area ratio for R A. It leads to point one two for R B and point oh nine. Um. An example of a house we recently did by large home review on Sawyer Street. The. The architect, as many of them are now doing, are adding floor ratio to their plans, that house was a little over five thousand square feet on a fifty five thousand square foot lot. It was a point one oh in R B. So that house could actually be larger under this form of measurement. Um, now. But to stop this here for just a moment, I want to share something else. Now, there was a lot of discussion about existing lots and nonconformities with the zoning board. Of appeals and um. So this, this is town council's comments that I. When they gave me the draft that I circulated with my email last week, so. We do not have to specifically address nonconforming lots in this Bible. Um, I think somebody made the point, Woody may have made the point at the Z B A meeting that chapter forty eight, section six, which governs nonconformities. And our article eight. Exists and continue to exist whether we adopt F A R or not, or not, we can't change that. And so. Existing nonconforming properties will be subjected to a special permit process rather than having to seek a variance. The impact of the new F A R is essentially going to be on new lots. And then for existing lots that are nonconforming. They will go through the special product permit process of article eight with the zoning board of appeals. And. You know, like the, the number, I'm not sure of the exact percentage, but I think the consensus is the number is. Well over sixty percent, maybe closer to seventy percent. Of our lots are nonconforming to begin with, so most people are going to be covered by. The nonconformity article. And that nonconformity may have been created, a large number of nonconformities and the change that was made in eighty six when we changed the lot sizes, the minimum lot size, which are. Eighteen thousand and A and thirty five thousand and B and sixty thousand and C. So um, that is. Existing property owners and in my opinion will have, actually, and I said this in the email. Will probably have an easier go of it. Only because they are going to be subjected to anything to a. Special permit process if they want to expand beyond. Expand their nonconforming F A R any further. That's, that's, it doesn't have to be dealt with. In this, in the text of the bylaw itself, so that's why language that did refer to that has been taken out by the recommendation of town council. So. Let me stop that share. Carolyn's here, of course, and can expand on that opinion if anybody. Uh, wants to. Wants to hear further about that, but again, so here are the proposed numbers. Um, again, R A is. Rather high, but it is based on the historical development of properties within R A. Um, this is based on the averages that we, the bylaw working group, the predecessor to the bylaw committee had gathered some data in twenty twenty one about all of this. And uh. These are the numbers, so. I guess it's more at this point, I'll take questions and comments, but it's, it's rather straightforward and the, and the goal again is to take away. The risk that the twenty percent two dimensional coverage presents. Especially in an age when we're getting to see more uh projects. Push the limits on dimensional requirements. And it's also to bring in proportionality of lot size, lot, house size to lot size. And measure things by three dimensions rather than two. And we all know on this board from. Our large home reviews that, you know, many, many, many people in this community are concerned about. The size of houses that are proposed near them and this will. Ensure that there is some form of neighborhood harmony while at the same time not necessarily eliminating all large houses. Um, I'll, I'll stop there and uh.
So, uh, thank you, Tom, um, for each member of the board, make your question directed to me. And as we normally do when we have a public hearing. And um, the point that you wish to make should be factual and should uh move us forward to making a decision about this particular discussion. Uh, Clark Brewer?
Yes, Ms. Glassmeyer, will you ask Mr. Callahan to please scroll up to the? Twenty percent um, building coverage that he had Xed out previously, I was trying to get a clarification on.
Go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
Jeez, the formality is going to kill us all.
Well, that's what Glassmeyer wanted.
Let's not have a big, no, dude, not Tom, Tom, do not, Tom. Point of order, do not go back and forth, look at me, I am running this meeting and you're listening when he's speaking and vice versa.
Yes, Ms. Glassmeyer, i- in this table, uh, under residence B or R B underneath. By buildings, I believe there's a clerical error here. In that by buildings, I believe is twenty percent uh across the board for every residential district. Instead of. Uh, thirty percent in residence B.
Yeah.
Is, are you agree, are you?
Yeah, no idea.
Let him finish, Congress is not a back and forth.
Meyer, uh, can you confirm that he agrees since he just changed it?
Uh, Mr. Callahan, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, I changed it. That came, that, the text came from town council, I didn't check it that closely that I didn't catch that, so yes, it's changed, but it's being replaced. And the cut, you know, I, I will say that, you know, in fairness to the zoning board of appeals, it isn't here, there was discussion about keeping them both. And. You can't have both, you can't have competing.
Ms. Glassmeyer, I'm not done with my questions. Could, can I just ask my questions and make my points and then Tom can talk?
Uh, yes. Clark, you have five minutes.
Uh, he, he got about ten minutes, can I get more than five?
It's the presenter, Mr. Brewer.
Okay, so um. The, these numbers, the point one seven, which equals seventeen percent, point one two, which equals twelve percent F A R. And point oh nine in the corresponding A, B, and C residential districts is, is, is a, a significant reduction in what's allowed now with twenty percent building coverage. Twenty percent guilt building coverage corresponds to about an F A R of point four or forty percent. Which is what we currently have, and you could probably make the argument for a conforming lot in residence C. That uh, forty percent uh would result in an astronomically huge house size, the size of a small school. Uh, and um, but I, my concern with seventeen percent, twelve percent, and nine percent is that you're, you're basically taking an as of right. Ability for people to increase the size of their houses. And um, making it overly burdensome, uh, if not i- impossible, and I can use a couple of examples. The, the, the interesting example. That I think I brought up last, uh, last time at our meeting that. That um, uh, Callahan's lot floor area ratio is, is just below the um, what would be required for his residential B district. At. Eleven point eight percent instead of the twelve percent. In that case, that lot, uh, whether he owns it or, or anybody else does, would, would only be eligible for a ten percent increase over the F A R. Or um. Uh, ten percent would be an additional two hundred and forty square feet. Now, I, I, I've run the numbers, I, I certainly could provide some perspective on what these numbers really mean. Um, I, I'd be more comfortable with uh, changing the building coverage. Because I, what I think and what I see in this is that it just takes. Future value away and flexibility away from each and every individual. Um, property owner. Uh, for example, people who are trying to create a multi-generational home, maybe have a, a bedroom on the first floor. Um. Many of the lots wo- would not support that uh, particular. Um, possibility, I just think that. Um. The, the drastic reduction in, in building. Uh, square footage that this require, this, this would require. It doesn't help our town. I think it's the, the biggest loss of future value that I've seen in. Uh, in any zoning amendment in, in all my time and serving the public interest here.
Is that the conclusion to your comment?
Well, I might have some more, if it's possible to have a discussion, I would encourage that.
Yeah, let me respond to that, please.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Callahan. But please also use your, your hand signal in fairness.
I, I was, I was looking for it, I couldn't find. So, um. Um, so first of all, again. We don't have in the town at the moment, houses approaching twenty percent of lot coverage as a general rule. We have lot coverages in line with these dimensions, again, because these are based on the actual data. And one of the objectives is to not allow. A twenty percent lot coverage. If that new house on Sawyer Street. You know, they could have gone to an eleven thousand square foot footprint. And multiply that by two and a half to three floors, they'd have a house well over thirty thousand square feet. Um, on. You know, Clark pointed out on R, R C, you would have incredibly large houses. And having lived here for many, many years and seen lot, large home review, both as just an observer, as one of the original proponents twenty years ago. And now as a regulator of it. That's not what this community wants to see. And this community is entitled, that's all zoning is making value judgments about how property will be developed. And, you know, I'm sure that in nineteen eighty six. When we did increase the lot areas. And rendered. I'm sure there had, there had been discussion that they're rendering over six, well over sixty percent of our properties nonconforming. And that puts people in a process and that puts people in, in uh. You know, some quote unquote restriction, but to, to discuss property values is purely speculative. Um, and, and that's not, that, not the concern of zoning, it's, the concern of zoning is how does the community want to see itself developed? And two dimensional zoning. Does not deal with. The potential bulk. And the impact on the neighborhood of having an extremely large property. And again, we are not. Seeing that and the, the F A Rs that are proposed, and again, I think R A is too high, I would personally lower it. But that is what the average shows, it's close to the twenty percent. And um, you know, as far, as far as my property goes, I'm nonconforming. Um, because of the lot size requirement. Uh, so I, you know, I'm not going to get into legal speculation of whether I would be able to go, go through the article eight process to expand this house. But. That's what most everybody in town will do. And that's what most everybody in town must do with the nonconforming, the high percentage of nonconforming lots we, we already have, so we're not adding any burden to what people are already dealing with. What we are trying to deal with is. Bring in a measurement that deals with three dimensions. That creates proportionality. And that. Incorporates our development patterns to date, which is what these numbers reflect. And, you know. There, there's no inherent property right to build out to the max, uh, and it's no inherent, you know, I'm sure I'm going to hear the argument at town meeting, kind of got a whiff of it at the last town meeting. That people seem to have an impression they can do whatever the hell they want with their property, but that's not the case, that's what zoning is all about, is a regulation that's been. So.
All, all right, Mr. Callahan.
That's, that's it, yeah.
Opinion, I think you have stated your opinion well. Uh, Mr. Hine, uh, Mr. Brew, I'm going to speak to, ask Mr. Hine to speak. Um, before you speak, since we have three people, it's, it's fair for him to be able to speak now, uh, Kevin?
Yeah, uh. Ms. uh, Glassmeyer, I'd like some background information as to why. What is the impetus for this being in front of our board now? Um, and it's a two-part question. Um, I, I want to know the history behind why this is in front. Of us, and I want to know the timing of why it's occurring at this point in time, I think. Um, some historical context that covers both those would be helpful.
Well, I can, I can take a shot at that.
Uh, just a minute, Mr. Callahan, remember I have asked that you wait until you're called off.
I apologize.
Alright, you uh, can begin and please keep the comments very specific and short.
Alright, so twenty years ago, when we first had a master plan that the then planning board refused to adopt, there was a citizens group. Who tried to implement a number of those changes, Clark and I amongst them, that's how Clark and I met. And we were the gang of five, and one of the things we proposed and brought forward was large home review. And our consultant on the master plan at the time had first brought that to our attention. There was a lot of mansionization going on in the mid two thousands, including some very telling examples of it in our, one of our neighboring towns. And originally, large home review was thought of and conceived of as a special permit process and. It ended up being what it is today. Which is essentially a residential site plan review. Um. In, fast forward to two thousand sixteen. I was part of another citizens group that was bringing forward some bylaw changes and one of them was to reform large home review, which. At that time, did not have the criteria about landscaping, lighting, traffic circulation that it has today. Um, and in those discussions. Uh, regarding that, I recall a zoning board meeting where one of the members then, who's not on it anymore. Brought up the concept of proportionality and proportional zoning and that's, you know, we, we did more research on it back then. And, you know, it was a concept that we stuck in my head and a few other people's heads to, to bring forward. Now, fast forward again to twenty twenty, twenty one, whenever the bylaw working group was formed. It was a consensus that the bylaw needed. Reform, it hadn't been comprehensively looked at since eighty six. It was well overdue for that. And that process has begun and it has begun. With, uh, you know, we are now going into the third town meeting. Uh, with it, there were actually maybe a couple. Isolated things that were brought forward before that during the COVID town meetings, but. Um. You know, we're at the point now where. The, the earlier town meetings have gone through a lot of um. Housekeeping changes that were needed. We, we've added a number of bylaws over the course of the decades, you know, the ones that go from like fourteen and higher. It all needed to be brought together more comprehensively, and now the next phase of that step and the redoing the bylaw is to deal with some substantive changes and to deal with the dimensional table, which again, hasn't been looked at since eighty six. So it's being brought forward as, you know, the culmination of maybe. Thoughts that have been percolating around for twenty years, but which in this town has the origin and the, the original passage of large home review. And uh, so that's, that's where we are today. Um, and it is, you know, F A R in the meantime has been adopted in our village. It's adopted in. It's adopted in many commercial mixed-use concepts around the Commonwealth, it is a dare I say, a trend in planning. Again, because it provides three-dimensional review of properties as opposed to two-dimensional. And uh, so it's, I think the time is right for us to do that. Especially, like, again, given the pressures we are seeing on this planning board of people pushing the limits on some of our dimensional requirements, it's only a matter of time till the twenty percent footprint is pushed to the limit. Um, and and I think, given that these numbers reflect where we have been historically, we need to memorialize these numbers, and and now is is a good time to do it, again, as part of our overall.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Brewer, would you like to add to the historical story?
A couple of, a couple of points. Um, I did analysis of Planning Board members, F A R, and uh Callahan mentioned that he uh uh thought that he is not conforming to what he's proposed. Uh, in fact, he is minimally conforming with his current house size.
My lots, my lot size is not.
That was a mistake.
That's not what I said.
Conform to F A R, his lot size doesn't conform to uh the residence B zoning. But um what what's interesting about about, uh, I think the the F A R numbers is they're 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 really not just numbers. Um, I did take a more close look and share some information on Brookline's uh point-three F A R in their one-acre uh zone uh districts, and they have some fine large homes on fairly large lots. Um, and and they use point-three, while Brookline is ten times the density of Cohasset, that's the number of people per square mile. Um, it's, it it is a different environment, but but still, um, their uh one-acre um uh residential district does correspond to our our residence B uh lot size closely. Uh, Tom proposes a point-one-two, they have a point-three. Um, which I think is a surprise. Also, I Newton has F A R. And interestingly, they have a number of residential districts where they apply a different and higher F A R based on a range of lot sizes, where it's it's actually um fairly well considered, I think, by examples in um in in their uh in their, you know, in their current neighborhoods. Brookline has a a a modeling device where you can click on each individual parcel and and it tells you automatically, I think it's building structural, Brookline, um and you can automatically find out what the what the F A R is for each individual lot throughout town, so it's very easy to kind of check out what what the existing F A Rs are for neighborhoods. But um in answer to um a partial answer to to Kevin's uh question, in addition to what um Tom mentioned, uh To- Tom's been interested in using this F A R for a while. The 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 problem I see is that the numbers that he came up with um uh haven't really necessarily been vetted or or are used real-world examples um to help to see if the numbers are are right. Like I said before, the the twenty percent building coverage in Residence C allows a ridiculously large building. But I think that it might make more sense in terms of proportionality of of structured a lot to to use the the structural coverage um and maybe reduce it for Residence C and slightly for Residence B, leaving it the same for Residence A, which is a a point-four F A R.
Um, so.
Instead of introducing uh new numbers that haven't been tested, that examples haven't been given, and and that un- unlike Brookline's uh um zoning bylaw, which has eight or nine pages of exceptions and clarifications on what the F A R is and what it isn't. Um, I just think that this uh this version isn't, excuse me, ready for um ready to hit the floor of town meeting, I just don't, I think we need examples and we need to know how this has worked in other towns.
So um, thank you very much, and um uh is that satisfactory for you, Mr. Hein?
I I do have a follow-up, um and I appreciate the the history. My follow-up is in our consideration of whether this should be um um in our discussion of this and and whether this moves forward or not, are lots on an individual lot basis throughout town identified clearly and already as conforming or non-conforming? And the reason I ask that is because if this were to be adopted, that would be the first question as to what path a property would go down in the process, the new process forward here. So it's an if, it's a hypothetical. I just want to know if that is already in place, if this were to be approved by our our board here and at town meeting and put into place, if that work has already been done so that the people that implement this at the town level know right away whether a lot is conforming or not, and it can be properly um work its way through the system.
All right, thank you. Um, I uh I'd like to respond to that, which is when we worked on the master plan, we developed a very good understanding of the individual areas within town and also the uh lot sizes and their distribution. So we do have that data, and it's uh richer every day by the fact that we can use satellite imagery and various other sources to update things to with higher precision. What I'd like to introduce now is not a back and forth about this particular uh in the way we're discussing. I would like us to discuss a solution. That is, there is um a a strong sentiment, certainly since I have been on the Planning Board, which is going on seven years, that there has to be some rationality to what's happening to the town and to the sizes of houses and the sizes of properties. And rather than sitting here and debating uh the numerical size, uh as Mr. Brewer says, without evidence, what is the possibility of continuing this particular part of the zoning bylaw change and bringing it forth in the fall? And the reason I say that is, if it's a question of proof in the pudding, we have the data, we just haven't uh had the professional capacity to analyze it in a in a way that sounds like Mr. Brewer might be satisfied with. But I but I do believe that Mr. Callahan is correct in that people within the community feel a sense that the scale of development is changing, and they have concerns about that. So I don't think we can just throw that out and think that everybody has the opportunity to do what they wish to do. I think what we have to do is think about what's the best decision to make. So I'd like to hear um not regurgitating what we're specifically dealing with, but what is the alternative to postponing this to the fall? Uh, Mr. Callahan?
Well, like like everything else, you know, I've lived here for thirty some odd, I don't know how many years now, thirty, going on forty next year. And this town is classic for study, 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 study to death. Town Hall's an example, we've been kicking that around for ten years and still don't have a definitive decision, but we do it with zoning too. Uh, these numbers aren't made out of thin air, I'm kind of, I'm not going to get insulted that, you know, they haven't been vetted, they haven't been thought through. I have thought them through. I've, you know, I have begged for input and haven't gotten it, but never- nevertheless, here we are. The numbers are backed up by the data we have on what our average house sizes. Is there a single piece of paper existing in town that identifies non-conforming properties? No, there isn't. The zoning board has a sense of how many there are, so, because they deal with the article that has to deal with them. I suppose, you know, lot size is easy to figure out, frontages are easy to figure out, but you know, as for a house and an expansion, like everything else, you know, any permits we issue, the zoning board issues, you're not going to know what the F A R is until somebody actually does a measurement, you know, we don't, we're not going to keep those measurements on on file somewhere. But if you've been noticing the plans that have been coming before us, they're all in these ranges. No one is going crazy yet. Again, the the newest house that we just faced that's coming on on Sawyer Street is a point-one-oh in Residence B. And the how, the 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 large house on North Main Street on Little Harbor, I asked for that data today, it, you know, it's over ten thousand square feet. Its lot coverage is, I believe, well in line with these F A R numbers. The the only difference is is because it's a two-dimensional measurement, you take the footprint, multiply it by the two and a half, three floors, and you get the ten thousand, over ten thousand square foot house. With an F A R, that would be a smaller house, it would be well less bulky than it is today. That that is a direct example of what this would do, but it would have a house that, you know, we we faced opposition to that from our brothers. Uh, it would have a house that would be resulting would be much more in line with its neighbors. But these numbers, these numbers are not made out of thin air, and and again, if we keep kicking these things down the road, you know, the horse is very well out of the barn with a lot of things in Cohasset, and they'll just be completely, and then why bother?
All right, all right, Mr. Callahan, I think that's enough for the, on that particular point. And what I would say is, uh, I suspect that Brookline took a very long time to settle on its own uh structure in terms of zoning, and and we know that, and I know that, because uh the former head of planning is a colleague of mine and uh came in after a eight-year uh discussion within the city about what their zoning was going to be. All right, Mr. Brewer, let me say, um again, I am interested not on going on and on and on about the numerical basis that we have are discussing, but I want to hear alternatives to not placing this on the uh the ballot this time and arriving at a more informed uh understanding of the circumstances in town. I want I want you to argue and say that's a dumb idea. Because right now, what we're what we're facing is, I know from this town meetings, we're going to have one town, we're going to have one member of the Planning Board step up and say one thing, and another member of the Planning Board says saying something else. We cannot do that, that is not a fair uh set, that's not a fair decision-making process for the public. So um if.
Well, point of order, Ms. Chairwoman, that um you you do not necessarily get a unanimous um decision by any board on any particular issue, and the floor of town meeting is a different animal than, say, the Planning Board voting on a special permit or uh site plan review, where the the town meeting deserves to know exactly what, especially what alternating, alternative positions might be on any particular critical or other type of uh issue that's being asked for a two-thirds vote. So um, you know, it it's par for the course, you know, I guess I would say if if Tom hadn't just taken the average based on a a standard conforming lot size, i- if there was some discussion, if there was some analysis, if there was examples, if there was um other towns that were similar to ours that had used the uh similar numbers, th- then I would say, you know, that's a support for um the numbers, that it would make sense, but simply taking an average and then not really discussing it, not talking about it, and not being willing to review anything else, it doesn't, it's not a good process. I mean, the master plan voted, the the master plan re- recommended in terms of land use that we do have um, we study the patterns of our existing residential neighborhoods, which we haven't done, and I I think I've said for the last year that it would be useful to have this in order to make this kind of change. I mean, I, and and I just think that the numbers aren't right, and in terms of Kevin's question, would a individual owner, homeowner know whether what their F A R is in the future, since this is a new feature of of um of zoning, they 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 wouldn't unless uh the assessor's office had that feature built into the their database. You can easily, though, um go into every single individual property, take the lot area and then uh divide it uh divide the lot area by the um the house size, because they use something called finished area, which is pretty close to um the floor area ratio calculation that's in the definition for floor area ratio. It's pretty similar. Excludes some things, but it clarifies what it is, so finished area that that they currently have, but you don't get that unless you manually do it, so no one would know necessarily if they're conforming or not, unless they called up their architect or engineer and say, hey, what what is this? What is, what is? No, I was, I was answering Kevin's question, Ms. Glasmeyer.
And I would like the same opportunity, Amy.
Well, well, Tom's gotten to talk quite a lot more than I have, but but I I just, in in terms of what what you've brought up, Ms. Glasmeyer, what is the process that would allow the right number, the number that could be sold on the floor of town meeting, that that we could get reasonable um uh unanimous uh consent on as a board? Um, and and I think that, you know, that would be, that it's on a good foundation, that it's not overly simplistic. Then it takes into account uh the the marvelous variables that we would expect to find uh once something like this passes.
All right, so you're making a recommendation?
Well, I I mean, I recommend that we we don't recommend this for the floor of town meeting as a board. Yes, that's, that would be my recommendation.
But I, I asked you specifically about whether or not we would make a decision to postpone taking this up until the fall to uh acquire some of the information that you're describing.
That that at the very least makes sense, instead of getting it on the floor of town meeting and having it defeated.
Okay, so uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan.
All right. Again, I I'm I now I am going to be insulted at this suggested that this hasn't been thought through, and I can assure you, knowing the pattern of the Bylaw Committee that I chair and the history of this town, that nothing will change between now and the fall, absolutely nothing. There'll be no study, there'll be no analysis. These, again, these numbers are not made out of thin air, and to suggest that we should be like Brookline, which is a dense urban community, and Brookla- and Newton, which is a denser suburban community, is ridiculous. And if our twenty percent lot coverage by footprint is yielding a point-four F A R, that's the very point of not adopting that number, we are getting away from that. The proposal is to get away from that threat, that that possibility of that kind of development, I can assure you, none of us want that. These are numbers that are supported, and I was going to make the point that if you see plans that are coming before us, I I did make that point a bit few minutes ago, all the F A Rs that are being voluntarily given to us are in the, are in these ranges. We are not seeing point-threes, point-fours, nobody's proposing that. And it's ridiculous to allow it to happen, it is not reality in the development patterns of this town, and we are simply memorializing on paper with numbers what the development patterns of this town have been, at least, let me, let me, let me just.
Your hand down, Clark, I see your hand.
Let me make one other point that um uh, would we be one of the first smaller suburban towns to do this? We might be the first, that's fine, there's nothing wrong with that. No, no, there was another point Kevin made, Kevin, just refresh my memory, now just, my head because I'm getting interrupted. Jumped out of my head.
I I I, my my last point was with regarding the mechanism, whether the mechanism or it's already done, so it's clearly.
Anybody, anybody, anybody today could calculate their F A R very easy, because it's a very easy mathematical equation. It's the square footage of your house, which assessor records have, and your lots over your lots. It's the square footage of your house, which assessor records have, and your lots over your lot size, which the assessor's records have. So without the engineer, without the architect, you could calculate where you are today very easily. By knowing your square footage and knowing your lot size and the assessor's office has all of that for you if you can't figure it out, if you don't know it yourself. So it is an easy thing to figure out. Just as, it's just as easy to figure out, my lot is nonconforming, my frontage is conforming, I have no idea about my setbacks. But all of that is easy to figure out. And then what you do if you're preexisting nonconforming is you're going through the easy, well, easier than a variance Article Eight process. So it's not hurting anybody. I will have to go through an Article Eight process with my house if I wanted to make it bigger, make a footprint bigger, no matter what I do, whether FAR existed or not, that is going to be the case for, again, two thirds of the properties in this town. So let's not get clouded by Brookline, Brookline is completely different than us, it doesn't apply to us.
All right, thank you.
Cohasset.
Right, just, excuse me, Ms. Glassmeyer.
Or first, uh, are you going to say something new?
The follow-up, um, is for some reason, um, Mr. Callahan has confused my bringing up Brookline and Newton as what I'd recommend for Cohasset in terms of the FAR numbers, and that's not the case. What I, what I tried to use them as an example of communities that have FAR, that have done so very carefully, that have identified exceptions and tried to make them fit their actual neighborhoods. An analysis that I think would be useful, um, a useful for, for this, for, or for any community to understand what the impact of a significant zoning change is, not just the average and what Tom thinks.
You know, I, I'm, I'm going to stop with this, with this, this is Tom, no, I'm sorry, Amy, I'm, I've had it up to here with this is what Tom thinks and Tom wants. I've been on two committees that have proposed this, most of the members sit there on their hands and we try to discuss. Nobody shows up in the public at our meetings and I don't know what else you magically you think will happen between now and the fall.
Well, one thing, uh, magical, I suppose, is that we could request that, we could request as a board that resources are provided for us to generate the information that's necessary for an affirmative understanding of the situation.
You don't even know what it is you want to generate. What do you want to generate? This is based on actual numbers of the development patterns in Cohasset through two, 2021. Period. What else is there?
Tom, it's a simplistic average. Based on, uh, a, a minimum lot size.
Yes, what else do you want measured on? You want it, you want it measured on all lots.
Tom and Clark do not go back and forth. Each one take a turn.
If you want to do, if you.
Tom got to talk more than me, now I just want to make one more point. I did the math and I distributed this so that everyone could see it. Uh, Tom's, um, point nine or nine percent lot coverage for a stand, for a minimum uh, residency lot would, would allow a 5,400 square foot house. You might say 5,400 square feet, that's, at 60,000 square foot lot, that's, that's pretty big, that should be big enough for just about anyone. And you might be right, but unfortunately, we're seeing, um, we're seeing houses bigger than that at the large home review. The, uh, at 12% Residence B, um, for a conforming, minimally conforming 35,000 square foot lot would allow a 4,200 square foot house, which a lot of us would probably say, wow, that's, that's, you know, it's twice the size of my house. That's, uh, that's plenty. But again, we're, we are seeing houses that are, are, are quite large. And then getting down to Residence A at 17% FAR for a conforming, minimally conforming lot, that's a 3,000 square foot house and 3,000 square foot would be pretty small for a new or reconstructed house if you're given your choices. But what gets really interesting is if you saw in my analysis, if the, if the lot sizes are half, like the hillside, there's, there's plenty of 10,000 square foot lots on the hillside, that, um, 9,000 square foot lot would only allow a 1,500 square foot house. And you might say that's fine, but chances are it's a two or three smallish bedroom houses, house. Um, for, for Residence B, that half lot size, pretty close to what Tom's is now, at 17,000 square feet, would be a 2,100 square foot house in Residence B. And then, uh, for half the lot size in Residence C, that's 30,000 square foot, that would only allow a, a 2,600 square foot house. And, and, and I don't pretend to do the analysis that I think needs to be done here, but I present these numbers as, they don't quite square with, uh, what we see, what we expect and what the, I think the aspirations of people are.
The aspirations of people is to see.
Mr. Callahan?
Right, please, let me respond to it, Amy. I can't just sit here and have one thing said without responding to it.
I do it all the time, Tom.
Yeah, well, I, I come from a business where I don't.
Uh, you, you do have to abide by the agreement we made prior to this meeting, so do you have something new to say?
I, yes, I do, is that the, the, the concept is proportionality of house size to lot size. And if you happen to have a small lot, so be it. Doesn't mean you get to be, we don't have zoning property line to property line. I can point out communities that have that and I can assure you, we don't want that. And again, I, I, nothing here is radical, nothing here is changing and, and the people in RA, if there are empty lots in RA, any, any empty lots left in RA, yes, they're going to be a smaller house on a small lot. But that's the way it should be, that's what the whole concept is about. I'll give you another example, that, you know, back to that main street property that's over 10,000 square feet. Just rounding out its lot size, which I know is 57 and change. The point one two applied to that is a 6,800 square foot house. This is not designed to defeat all large homes. But it wouldn't be 10,000 square feet, because that's what a footprint measurement does. And we will, we saw another proposal, if, I don't know where that stands, the one on the ocean about, that was over 9,000 square feet. We will continue to see those where people can do them unless we go forward. And, and again, I don't think there's any uh, majority opinion in town to see all of that kind of development happen.
All right.
So, you know.
All right, both of you.
You don't understand the logic of it, examples aren't going to change the logic of it.
Both of you have, have, uh, expressed your opinions, um, very well and extensively.
Just a 30 second rebuttal, Ms. Chairwoman. Just a 30 second rebuttal, that is, if, if house, uh, if, if this was a bylaw just for new construction and it didn't affect every single existing homeowner in all three residential districts, then, you know, I, I guess I'd have less of a problem with it, because you know, if you're buying a lot, you know what you could build and, and, um, and if you either can build the house you want or you don't buy it. So, but, but what this does is it punishes all of us really, potentially of, and, and robs us all of future value. Well, not me, because I've got a big lot, but.
But doesn't, doesn't Tom have built into this some means of relief?
It's only a 10%, it's a, it's a micro, like, can I use Tom's house as an example?
But you're basically making it sound like he is chopping the legs off everyone.
Yeah, that's the whole point, and that's the whole point of my presentation.
The 10% increase of the FAR that. Well, I was talking and, and.
Yes, I know, but you're basically saying the same thing over and over again. In since then.
All right, I yield my time then.
You cannot.
I just want to say it's a misrepresentation, Amy, with all due respect, that's why I pointed out the Article Eight process. The existing property owner is subject to a completely different process. And they will still have the ability, based on the special permit standard of expanding their existing nonconformities to FAR. You gave the example of, uh, a particular town official's house that was at point three two FAR today. That individual could expand his house through a special permit process where the new construction could never be point three two. There is a difference between the two in this bylaw. It, it's, it's built in because 48, section six, as town council has pointed out, exists, it can't be ignored, it can't be thrown out, it's there. The existing property owner is going to have more rights than the new construction under this, if you want to start quantifying quote unquote rights.
All right, so, uh, I can say that at this point, we're going around in circles and we're not going to end up anywhere, but making a request to, uh, the ma- town manager or the select board for the resources necessary to create enough information that the public will feel that this has been aired from an unbiased perspective. Both of you are so diametrically opposed that you cannot say anything more than be biased, you're biased.
Amy, I read this, I read, I am the chair of the zoning bylaw committee, which by a three to one vote is bringing this forward. Okay, you can't ignore a committee that's bringing it forward.
And I'm an expert in zoning too, Tom.
Let, let's not have a back and forth here. Um, I don't see us getting any further on this particular topic, and I think that the solution is to actually respond to the, the lack of information a- around the specific. This is a very complex landscape, it is not a flat landscape, we are not in California and we're not out in the desert and we're not on a beach. And so if we want the public to trust us and actually create a system that they will believe in, we have to actually do more work. And it's unfortunate and you, both of you have been enormously important in getting us to this distance, but we can't get to the point of a conclusion.
That's.
Let me, let me, let me ask, let me just take a vote right now, a straw poll. I don't need to know what you two are going to do. Kevin, where do you stand?
Um, I just would like a point of clarification before answering that. With, you, you talked, Tom talked about the board that he's on, three to one, okay? To be clear, where does the town select board stand on this very issue that's in front of us now? Approve or disapprove, where, where do they stand?
They haven't voted on it yet because it was still i- in process, but I can honestly tell you that their consensus would be, my, my reading of their consensus and their comments that they'd made publicly is that they would support this. The zoning board said that it believed in proportionality in concept. Now, one of their members then begins to criticize this in emails after the meeting, but that's what happened. So, I, I.
So this isn't baked, this isn't fully baked, if this hasn't been in front of the select board for them to weigh in on this.
It's not their decision, it's our decision, make the recommendation, we're the only one with the statutory authority to do that. We don't get to decide where, that they can recommend, they can, you know, but.
Um, Chair, 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 um, Glassmeyer, I think you indicated at some point at a prior meeting that there may be outside unbiased available resources to have a, um, um, uh, graduate student study specific topics that are put in front of them. Tom, you're shaking your head, okay?
Yeah, because I've been through this, but I've been through this for three years and I had to beg and fight to get town council's opinion at the last minute.
Well, we have that.
Have the resources and nobody wants to spend.
But, but the chair has a unique access to other types of resources that are informed resources. And could this be put in front of a particular, um, expert, um, to provide at low or no cost to the town some nuts and bolts to this so that this can be put in front of the select board when it's fully baked?
Student, a graduate student, really?
Okay.
Quite frankly, I think the idea that the town doesn't have the money is not the way to think.
Then ask the select board for the money, ask the select board for the money.
And, and they have been asked, all right, and I don't know what data you think is magically out there, I don't know what you're looking for, so I can't even define.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure either, the question needs to be framed, but I see two people that are coming at it from two different angles right here, and I don't feel informed to be able to say this is going to run on the legs that have been put in front of me and from what I hear here. And for us to, for our perspective as to where we are now and how this would vote out, to put this to town meeting, it would be DOA. Because there would be so much confusion at the town meeting with regard to this and people would see right through the confusion on the board, it would get nowhere. And I'm not saying on the merits of it, it's not worthwhile and, and good and the right way to go.
It's calculated confusion and, and.
No, I don't think so, and I think that, I think on its merits, we live in a three dimensional world, it makes sense to look at things holistically. And we do know that there's limits within our existing process of large home review, where things do not get properly reviewed and or cited and limited, but they go through because there are holes in the system. But the way this is currently packaged right now, yes, parties will take advantage of this and take advantage of the confusion and it won't get anywhere past town meeting. And I just think that's the reality from what I hear and see right here. And if it means we have to wait six or seven months or whatever it is to get this fully baked and put the right legs underneath it and to build a consensus, I haven't heard one town public voice one way or the other on this. I mean, does anyone even pay any attention? At town meeting, they will, but it'll be, how soon can we get out of there? Now we're going to get into the weeds of this thing? No, because I'm going to vote it down, it won't go anywhere. Let's recognize what's in front of us here, and if it's incomplete, then we, before turning it in and get an NF on this thing, do it right.
I'm going to hear, here's what I'm going to suggest, is that everybody who's here, start doing some work. And when I try to discuss.
I've done work, Tom.
No, I, I, Clark, you're the only one that does, even though we're on different sides of things, frankly, so I'll, I'll applaud you for that.
You didn't have to point that out, Tom.
But, but, you know, I, I, I am beyond frustrated that if I try to bring up other topics, you're all looking at your watches at 8:30 frigging night after our meetings and want to get out of there.
But Tom, you gotta respect people's time, that's all, and you don't.
Not go back and forth about this.
Well, I'm sorry, but sometimes the work needs to be put in.
Yes, the work needs to be.
When I was on Concom and the select board, we went till 11 o'clock regularly.
This is, Tom, it is not your fault that this is not unfolding in the way you might have wished. But as a result, and please, Clark, put your hand down, I see you, um, and, but at this point, what we have are two people that are very smart and, and are substantively informed on opposite sides and two people, and two people who are realists.
And a committee that voted three to one to bring this forward.
I was the dissenting vote, by the way, no surprise. But I sat through dozens and dozens of meetings and tried to make these points to Tom. I tried very hard.
I know you did, that's fine, let's.
And he didn't want to listen, he didn't want to listen.
Of you, no, no more discussion.
Look, I'm just explaining that I made a great effort to be on board with, I got, I mean, all, all the other articles I supported. It's just this one jumps out as being a bridge too far.
Okay, so at this point, I am going to ask that, or I'm going to make a recommendation that we, uh, request the resources necessary to define and then execute, uh, an investigation of.
But Ms. Glassmeyer, we have to, we actually have to vote on this warrant article.
I understand that, I understand that, but I am, I'm making a, a statement about where I think we're going to end up.
We could change the warrant article, I suppose, the, the, we need more information.
The recommendation, the recommendation would be that it be indefinitely postponed.
Whether, that it be, that it be postponed.
Indefinitely postponed to the term.
And that the resources are requested from the select board to create the information system that's necessary to determine more specific outlines about the consequences of the change that's being discussed, uh, Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just want to caution the board before you go ahead and say that we're going to recommend town meeting that this be indefinitely postponed, and here's my reason for it. According to town meeting time, an indefinite postponement is considered unfavorable action on a zoning amendment. And under chapter 48, we are prohibited from bringing back what they consider to be a repetitive petition. So once something has been voted down. So once something has been voted down by town meeting, it cannot be brought back for a period of two years. Unless it was favorably recommended by the planning board in the first instance. And it doesn't appear that that's the direction this board is heading in at the moment. Um or unless that subsequent zoning amendment is substantively different. But my recommendation would be, if this is not going to be um brought forward for town meeting to vote on, my suggestion would be that the recommendation should be that it be referred back to the planning board for further study so that you can then come back in the fall, if that's your wish, with a revised article.
Thank you. Do I hear a a member of the of the uh board that would make that recommendation?
I I move that that the um proposed zoning article will be referred back to the planning board for additional study.
All right. Um, do I hear?
I will second that.
All right, roll call vote, alphabetical?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
All right, um my uh my recommendation at this moment is that uh the planning board members that are available uh speak with the select board about the importance of having a basis of understanding that is going to be effective for a revision of this bylaw change that would be brought back if so, if so capable um uh in the fall.
Let me, um this is where I'm going to reassert myself as chair. I I think it will be chaos if this board goes all individual member willy nilly to the select board.
I'm not saying for everybody to go.
I will take care of that, but I'll tell you what, you guys better, you got, you need to come up with what you think this study would be, because frankly, I don't think you know what you want to study.
That's an assumption, Tom.
No, I.
But let's not back and forth, not back and.
So so you 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 tell me what it is you want to study, and I'll go to the select board, and and if you want to get it to me by tomorrow, I'm going there tomorrow night, so.
Uh, Tom, there's no way that we we cannot, we cannot actually do that. We actually have to figure out what it is that's going to help us make the best decision.
Because you don't know, so you're defeating something.
You're right, Tom. No one knows, because it has to be determined what the services are of an outside expert consultant needs to do to make this palatable to the general public and to the select board for approval on its own merits. It's not there yet.
All right, I'm going to return the chair's position to Tom Callahan to bring the meeting to a close.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh I second that.
All right.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Thank you, Ms. Murray, for being here, and we'll be in contact with you also about insights.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thanks, everyone.